Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Girl Seale Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move into the agenda. The agenda is very short tonight, but I felt it was important for us to get together. It's been awhile since we've talked and, you know, I thought simply to touch base and maybe get a few of these things that, like the Bayview zoning issue, get a little more information on that, kind of get things rolling a little bit even though we don't have applications to speak of. So, this should be a short meeting tonight, guys, but thank you for your participation. Is anybody who wants to change the agenda? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Brian, support. Dan?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have the minutes. The last meeting we held was on March 7th. Lori prepared the minutes for us. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the minutes? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion from Jim, support.
Support.
Steve? All the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Obedied. Motion carried. Good evening, Jay. Minutes are approved as submitted, as usual. Lori, a nice job.
Thank you.
Always count on you. Next item is public comment, but since there's no one in the audience, we'll move past that to the famous Chairs Report. First item on the Chairs Report is the Bayview project. The background on this is that, if you recall, that back in, I guess it was probably February or March, we received a request basically passed on from the Zoning Board of Appeals, that they were seeing a significant number of variances on that property in that region, which were very similar to what we had faced a couple of years earlier on the east side of Hickory Island with the small lots and various sundry things. And it led to the creation of an R1F zoning district. Well, the ZBA was asking, was it appropriate or would we investigate whether some changes might or should be made to the other side of the island as well to eliminate so many non-conformances? And so, we asked Brian to kind of do an initial investigation for us, and he's got a presentation to show us and some potential next steps for us to consider. So, we're not taking any action on anything tonight beyond simply providing further guidance for Brian as to what we may or may not want done. Brian, it's all yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna go up. I did prepare a few slides for you just to walk through this, but yeah, what we've done is taken a very similar approach to the Bayview side of Lower Hickory Island as to what we did with the East Riverside several years ago. That ultimately, for those of you, we have at least a few who are still here, led to the creation of a new zoning district, the R1F residential district, which was intended to be more conducive, more comparable to the way the East Riverside had developed. We had a significant amount of non-conformity from lot widths to lot sizes to side setbacks to building spacing to detached accessory in a street front yard. So, literally, well, I shouldn't say literally, virtually, almost every property in that area had a non-conformity of some sort at that time. That did lead to a number of ZBA cases. We felt it best to try to address that in a better fashion rather than just allowing everyone to continually go through ZBA. So, what we've had is a pretty similar situation occur on the waterfront side of Bayview Drive, and we've been analyzing the properties, the residences, the existing neighborhood conditions in relation to the current zoning, which is R1B for that particular neighborhood. And what I've got is I've got a few slides with a condensed version of a spreadsheet that we've created with sort of almost all of the dimensional data applicable to these zoning lots, at least for our purposes as a planning commission. So, the four that I'm going to focus on tonight are the street front structures, lot width, lot area, and then our two ratio calculations that limit the size of homes that can be constructed on a piece of land. One is the floor area ratio, which takes into account both the first and second floor, sort of a usable area in terms of its ratio to the lot. And the other is the lot coverage ratio, which is more intended to identify the actual building coverage of the particular property, not necessarily taking into account vertical elements, but more horizontal buildings and structures on the lot. So, this is just a look, I just threw this in so everybody knew where we were talking about. So, this is, we referenced a couple of times now the R1F district. So, these properties on the waterfront side of East River were all rezoned to R1F several years ago. Really, I think that was a big help to that neighborhood for zoning purposes. It allowed people to make improvements to their properties without the added restrictions and inconveniences of having to go before Zoning Board of Appeals. So, now, we're turning our focus really to the waterfront properties on the Bayview side. There are a handful of interior lots on Bayview. I will probably, before all is said and done, we'll probably analyze those two and throw those in the mix just to make sure we're not missing something. But, these lots generally, what I've noticed is, they are not really developed in a similar pattern to what we have on the waterfront side. And quite honestly, it's visible, it's, we can't get the exact dimensions, but it's pretty discernible just from looking at the aerial photo. You can see we have much bigger lots on the interior side, whereas you can see the waterfront side, how close all of the residences are together and how narrow those lots actually are by comparison. So, starting with, I mentioned kind of a condensed version of the spreadsheet that we've created, and I do apologize, I know PowerPoint's not the best way to show this, but it gets my, at least it gets my points across, I think, for tonight. So, the very first item I mentioned, we want to talk about, are the street front detached accessory structures. So, there are 29 residences on the waterfront. Twelve of those 29 currently have some form of detached structure in a front yard. Some of them are full-on garages, some of them are smaller storage and/or tool sheds. Many of them are non-conforming. A few of them did obtain ZBA approvals for their construction based on unique lot characteristics, based on character of neighborhood, those types of things. So, from that standpoint, it's not quite as high a percentage as the East Riverside was. Any of you who've ever driven down that side know that because of the narrowness of those lots, virtually almost all of those residences on East River have a street front yard detached structure. That was not permitted under your ordinance for R1F. It is now permitted under your ordinance. So, that would be the first thing we would probably take a look at, given 12 out of 29 is not an insignificant number. It's not, you know, 70, 80, 90 percent, but anytime we're approaching almost half the lots having a certain condition, that becomes part of the neighborhood character, at least in my opinion. So, I think that'll be one thing we'll definitely want to look at as we move forward. Moving into the dimensions of the lots themselves, and this is where these get a little funky with all our, my little coloring patterns. I tried to find a better way to demonstrate this. This is what we ended up with, though. So, in terms of lot widths, we have 26 of the 29 lots are deficient in terms of lot width. That in and of itself doesn't really concern me that much. These are all zoning lots. They are lots of record. They are all developable and/or buildable lots from that standpoint. However, what happens is, when we take what is supposed to be a conventional 80-foot wide lot and we apply conventional side yard setbacks that are supposed to apply to an 80-foot lot, but we restrict somebody who has a 42-foot wide lot to meet those same setbacks, we really, really narrow that building envelope for what somebody can do on that particular piece of property. So, from that end, it's not necessarily the width that I have real issue with. It will be the impact that that width has in relation to the side separation and the side setbacks between all of these residences. The next one we looked at was lot area, which, similar to my whole lead-in on lot width, isn't in and of itself a huge concern, but we do have 21 of the 29 are deficient in terms of R1B lot area, not an insignificant number by any stretch. And really, the spin-off of what that lot area restriction does is it puts us in the position, if we go to the far right side of the table, the smaller lots, our floor area and our lot coverage ratios are generally based on larger lots. So, now we have restrictions that are perfectly acceptable on a 16, 17, 18,000 square foot lot. When we try to apply those same ratio-based limitations to lots that are 13, 16, 14, 11,000 square feet, becomes much more restrictive, really pulls down what you can do in terms of floor area and lot coverage. And to that end, 13 of the existing residences out of our 29 exceed the maximum floor area ratio, while another 12 of those, and again, some are the same, many are the same, but not all, another 12 in isolation actually exceed the lot coverage ratio restriction for this district as well. So, you can see across the board, we've got a number of different non-conforming elements, not at all dissimilar from what we dealt with on the East Riverside. And I do think it is something that if the township, and to some degree the neighborhood, want to help remedy some of this from a zoning standpoint, I don't think it's a difficult resolution, quite honestly. I think we can make some significant improvements in eliminate, I shouldn't say eliminate, reduce the extent of the non-conformity in this neighborhood. We will, in all likelihood, we will not fully eliminate it, so maybe I should have made that clear up front, but that's the same tone I started with on the Hickory Island discussion many years ago. Because in order to completely eliminate non-conformity, we would have to set that bar so low such that every property complied with lot width, lot area, floor area, lot coverage. There's always going to be a couple of lots that are outliers so far that we just don't want to bring the number that low. You know, I'm trying to think of, if I can find a good one on here. There's a couple of 30-foot lots and 31-foot lots in terms of width. If we knock everything down to a 28, 29, 30-foot minimum lot width for this district, I think we have the potential, it wouldn't be as big of an issue here because we have the, we have the R1E overlay for lot splits, but anytime you do that, you do create the potential for some splits to open up where we really don't want that. That's not our intent, is we don't want to necessarily increase density in this neighborhood. What we want to do is we want to have zoning standards that match how this neighborhood develops, as opposed to trying to apply sort of a one-size-fits-all that works for much of the township, which does not work for this particular neighborhood. So, with that being said, I do have a couple of steps that I want to take on that I'll give some additional information to you for our next meeting. The first, I alluded to earlier, and that's going to be the side setbacks and the building spacing between residences. R1B requires a one-side yard minimum of six feet and a combination of 18 feet. It also requires an 18-foot separation between residences. And again, I know it's not anything we have dimensioned, but I want you to look at these homes and tell me how many of those you think are 18 feet apart. Couple of them, not many, though. So, I do think there's, that's an element we definitely want to look at. That was really an important consideration on the East Riverside, where we knocked side yard setbacks down to, I believe, fives from the six and 12 to five and five with 10-foot spacing where it was appropriate. We do have to be a little careful on the spacing, and I'll confirm this with the fire chief and fire marshal. Anytime we get to a point where we encroach into a 10-foot spacing between two principal buildings, I believe the fire code, I should look at Dan for this, I think there's a call for a fire-rated wall in some instances. So, we'll want to, we'll want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for any potential problems in terms of, we don't want to go too low, I guess, and force people into having to build something that's not necessary or inappropriate or becomes cost prohibitive, should they want to do an addition or remodel or something. But, I think if we keep it somewhere around that, maybe 10, maybe even when we bump it up to like a 12 or something, anything down from an 18 makes the situation a little bit better, is my guess. I haven't studied it yet, I still need to do that. Once I have that information added to my spreadsheet, what I want to do then is I want to apply all 29 of those properties, and I want to see what happens if we just flat-out apply R1F standards to those properties. Where does that take us? Does that get rid of a quarter of the non-conformity? Does that get rid of three-quarters of the non-conformity? Does it help us at all? Does it leave us in the same position we are today? But I do think that application of a district that already exists would be my preferred mitigation or my preferred remedy, because it would be essentially the path of least resistance to do so. If we find that R1F just misses the mark for this neighborhood, we might have to do, similar to what we did before, if we want to make changes, we might have to create a new district to better address this neighborhood. And at that point in time, I think it'll be really critical for us just to have some dialogue to determine whether or not, for these 29 properties, is there value in creating a new zoning district that's applicable really to only 29 properties throughout the entire township? So, that one will be, if we find that that would be how we would need to address it, I think it's at that point in time that we have a good discussion to determine whether or not we pursue it, whether or not we actually continue to look at this and try to make some changes. Because we don't have to, quite frankly. It's sometimes not doing anything is actually the right decision, but I want to know that before I try to, you know, give you guys that type of guidance. And then my closing point was, if we do decide that we'd like to pursue some type of an amendment, whether it's application of R1F, whether it's a modified R1F, whether it's a completely new district altogether that's applicable only to these residences, I do think some type of an open house or some type of neighborhood outreach, I do think would be important. If we're going to start playing around with dimensional requirements and zoning designations for people's properties, I want to get them in a room so that we can have a conversation with them, so they understand what we're doing and they understand why we're doing it, and they also understand the full process that is behind it, so they don't just think that we're, you know, we're not just haphazardly slapping zoning designations all over the township on a map because the color scheme looks better. We really want to make sure that the zoning is serving its purpose and that it's, you know, letting people do projects that maintain neighborhood character, but maybe not allowing people to do everything that they might possibly want to do because we understand there are restrictions. You, if you're on a 30-foot lot, there's some restrictions to that. You don't have the ability to do the same thing that somebody on a two-acre lot can do. So, I do think that would be important, though. So, I would obviously encourage the commission to take that on. If we come to a decision and determine that we want to move forward with something, then we'll certainly reach out to that neighborhood. It's only 29 properties. Quite frankly, it's pretty easy mailer to do. It's a pretty easy meeting to set up at Township Hall, and then we can go over all of those details. We can look, we can meet with each individual owner on their own if they like, and we can sit and look at their property and show them why it is or isn't non-conforming for multiple reasons, and then explain to them what the implications of that really are or are not at that point in time. So, again, that would be my suggestion if we move forward. That's all I have for tonight. Obviously, pending any questions or any other suggestions that the commission may have, obviously, we can, we can continue to look at additional items. I've just kind of focused on the ones that have either come up the most or the ones that I think, having done similar projects like this before, the ones that are typically the ones we need to work on.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Let's run around the table here and see what commissioners think about what they've heard and what they think of your next steps. We'll start with Mr. Fruchy.
All right. That's there. Thank you, Brian. This is very helpful. It's kind of where we think we're looking for a jumping off point. I think it is a good idea to study it. I do like the idea of starting with the R1F as a starting point to see if that's going to work for simplicity's sake, if nothing else. And I think what we need to be careful about is, what are the downstream implications of this? This is what I want to be thinking about the whole way through. In other words, if we were to, you know, take the street front structure as one example, if we were to say, okay, it's all right to put up a street front structure, and then next week, all the houses without an X on your spreadsheet, put up street front structures, what does that do to the character of the neighborhood? Is it a, is that a more fair result in that those who had already put them up, either non-conforming or not, have them and so therefore it's fair that the others do have the ability to put them up? Or does that change the character of the neighborhood, maybe even for the people across the street who bought their lot with a view of the water that's now going to be blocked by a garage that they were assured would never be there because the zoning didn't allow it? So, you know, those are the sorts of things we need to think about, or make sure that while we are making improvements, we're not making other things worse, so.
Absolutely. Those unintended consequences are what we always want to make sure we're protecting against, and that's why I like kind of analyzing this out as far as we have and even farther as far as I intend to take this, so that we can, we can have those conversations and really think about what does this mean, what will this do, either the rest of the community or at minimum, the rest of this neighborhood.
So, I'd just like to say that as we go through this, kind of continue to check ourselves that, you know, what is it that we're gaining and what are we, what are we costing? So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Steve?
You know, I think we're still early on in this. I really don't have any questions. Your analysis was good, and that's it from me.
Thank you. Jim?
Brian, great job. I'll echo what Steve and what Jay had said earlier. I'm glad we're looking into this. With all the overwhelming non-conformities, it's good that we're looking into this. I don't remember why, I was on the subcommittee for the R1F, why we never rolled the whole island in together, but neither here nor there. We'll look at it now. And I can't remember, there is an association on the other side, if we can, there's.
Yeah, there's the Hickory Island Association, which is why we were, that was the group we were dealing with at the time.
Right, and I don't remember if the other side has the, has anything that we can look into.
Not to my knowledge.
No, interesting, and.
That may be why we were focused on that, that other side.
Got it. Great, so, looking forward to it.
Yeah, with the, with the other side, just again, a little refresher for those that weren't here. I mean, that was one that really, we saw the issues occurring, and they also, the homeowners in the association saw the issues occurring as well. So, that run was really kind of a work together to kind of resolve this or see what we can do to improve it. And at that time, I think it came up at some point in the conversation was, what if we look at the, you know, the entire Lower Hickory, even the Bayview side? And I think the determination was made that, you know, we really were, we needed to kind of keep focused on one element and not kind of stretch ourselves too far at that time. But, yeah, it created a really nice model to apply to the other side, too. So, it was, it was, that was a really good project. I'm glad that one.
The only thing you'll see probably the difference is on the Hickory Island side, there weren't any structures on the other side of the road. They were all on the riverside, and so Jay had a great point. Now, you're dealing with property owners on both sides of the street, and so the structures could be a problem.
There are also quite a few more homes, too. That was another thing, is there, I believe there are 40-some on the other side, which, okay, it's relative, but 29 versus, you know, 40, 50 is, at least, I think that was part of the reason we gave it more attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Brian?
I'll continue the praise and say, you know, great job, Brian. It's a good logical path forward. I especially like the idea of, as we move forward and, you know, doing some community outreach and seeing what the residents have. I'm wondering if, you know, in order to make sure that we have the most impact, I don't know if we'll, if it's having a meeting here or if it makes sense to actually go off-site, maybe have a meeting over there where.
Take the meeting to them.
Yeah, where we can get more of the neighbors involved. And just one question is like, you know, how often is this occurring at the ZBA level that we're having these issues?
It hasn't come up in, I'd say, the last one was maybe a year, within a year. What happened was we had a flurry of activity in this neighborhood that sort of brought this up to the forefront, at least for myself and for staff. And right after that, it just really kind of slowed down to a point, it literally just stopped. I don't think we've, we haven't had a permit or a set of plans in for this particular neighborhood in approximately a year. So, it was just one of those things where we had, we had a ZBA, we had a request for a new street front storage building. We had, I think we had a couple of home expansions. So, the detached structure obviously had to go to ZBA, which they did. One of the, one of the home expansions had some floor area and lot coverage issues that were so far beyond what Planning Commission, Planning Commission has some leeway. There's a 5% threshold within which you can seek Planning Commission approval. They were so far beyond that, we were going to have to send them to ZBA for, not an outrageous number, but a significant variance, and they actually chose to not do the project because of that. And then we had another one that was only off on lot coverage by a little bit, and they chose to downsize in order to meet, so they are now pretty much maxed out. But, it was just within the course of maybe like a month, we had all of these projects at us on this one small little neighborhood, so that really brought it to the forefront at that time. But I will say that it has not been as pressing of late, but we did start the process, and obviously, we've had a few other things pop up in the interim that caused some, caused this to kind of maybe drag out a little longer than it should have. But, I think it's time, we've got the time, this is a good opportunity this summer while things are a little slow, at least Planning Commission-wise, we can get this thing sorted and get it tied up however, however we want to proceed.
Thank you, Brian. Dan?
I think this is definitely a good exercise to go through. I would, I would hate to be causing all the residents to come get a variance for a common accessory structure such as a shed or garage or maybe even a shed out in front of their house. So, if it seems that it, that those type of structures would fit well in that district, it's something we should look at.
Definitely. Thank you, Dan. Brian, in terms of the work you're going to be doing, I think there's another piece of information, you know, it kind of builds off of what I think Jay was saying. For example, I know a number of those houses up there, when they, in that area were originally built, they were built with the garages right directly attached to the, to the front of the building, of the, of the structure itself. It was not a detached structure, it was actually attached. And I, you know, and I think it would be worthwhile to, you know, in trying to address Jay's question of, if 12 of them right now have detached, okay, that doesn't mean automatically that there would be 17 more that would, that would automatically occur if we changed the zoning, because some X number there have already been built with garages attached to the principal structure. So, looking at it that way, you know, might, with the same thing with other accessory structures, you know, what's there and how likely is it that it would change? So, consider that when you're, when you're, when you're going through the analysis.
Yep, I think those are, those are great points, and I think even to the point of, you know, there's a lot of things, I'm not going to write this all up tonight, I think there's a lot of different avenues we can take regulation-wise, where maybe all the others do have attached garages, so we don't, we know we're not going to have the need in the future for, for that size of a structure, but maybe, maybe there is a need for something that's a little bit smaller, and maybe we restrict the size of it with an understanding that a little storage building that's, you know. that's, you know, under, you know, whatever, pick a number, 200, 400 square feet, something like that, might be applicable or appropriate. Because the other thing we have to remember is on the waterfront, we're, we have a lot of regulation to, towards accessory in the waterfront yard. So if you've fully built, if you've maxed out your building envelope from side to side, then basically there's nothing you can do in the side, there's nothing you can do on the waterfront. Really, these little small spaces between the street front and the home is all these people, in some instances, is all these people have to work with. So I, again, I'm just kind of spitballing right now, but I think there's, there's a number of ways we could handle that and, and not have it become sort of a nuisance. Again, my goal is not to change the character of this neighborhood. This neighborhood has developed how it's developed. What I think is appropriate is having zoning provisions that more accurately reflect how it's developed as opposed to, again, something that creates, you know, upwards of 75, 80, 90% nonconformity in certain instances.
Well, we can certainly evaluate the options for how to solve the problem once we understand the problem. So I think your next steps are appropriate, and then that will, I think, probably lead us down a path that, that takes us to wherever it is we, we think we ought to end up.
Absolutely.
Okay. So any further comments or questions for Brian on this?
A quick question. In this analysis, are we going to have a clear list of who actually did the appropriate process of filing permits or, you know, going through the township versus those who didn't? And does that bear any weight on what we're doing? And clearly, if 80% of these just did on their own without following the permits and following the process, shame on them.
I think for the most part, we'll see what we can do to review the case files. That's going to take some extra time for Lori. I'm not, I'm not personally that concerned because the highest nonconformities are lot widths and lot areas, and those are not something that you, you would need a permit for, if that makes sense. And the FAR and LCR maxes are relatively new regulations, less, in this community, less than 10 years old essentially. So I don't think that people did residential expansions without permits to get them to the point where we have some of these high FARs. FAR just was never regulated until, again, approximately maybe 10 years ago or so. So to that end, those items don't concern me as much. The ones where it, where it might would be these street front structures. So at a minimum, I think we can pull the files for these existing street front accessory, and we can see whether that was something with ZBA approval or whether we have record of how, if, and when it was actually approved and permitted by the township as well.
Very good. Let's make sure that's included as well. Makes sense. Okay. If there are no further comments, thank you, Brian. Good job as usual. And we'll move on to while you're up there, let's talk about the project updates. What, what's going on in the project area right now?
Lots of stuff going on. Sorry about that. Not a lot of it Planning Commission-related. What I do have is a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. So many months ago, we had a pre-app with the gas station folks at the corner of Meridian and Macomb. We've not heard back from them in the time since. Lori and I were talking about that when I was in the office the other day. I think we're going to do some follow-up with them, just to say, is this still on your radar? Do you want to have a meeting? Do you want to submit revised plans or are you just, you're done and we'll just take it off our list? But it would be, it would be good to maybe have some closure, one way or another. So unfortunately, no real update on that, other than we'll, we'll follow up to see what we can hear back from them. And if they do want to pursue it, then we'll, you know, we'll work them through that process and get them ready to come back in front of you. But at this time, I don't, I don't have any more on that one in particular. The, the other one that we do have a new application in for is a project with the Island Shops Development, which is where the Hungry Howies is located. That's with the most visible business there. So that's usually how we just refer to it. But we had a meeting with them last week as well. They're proposing some parking lot modifications to the Macomb Street side of their parking lot. And what, what the project has done is it's put them in a position where they need two variances from ZBA in order to do this project. It is a project that if, if ZBA approves it, it could be eligible for an administrative plan review. However, we were a little hesitant with that because it's a pretty significant project in my eyes in terms of its impact on Macomb Street. So we do also have the ability to kick that up to Planning Commission if we determine that to be the necessary or more appropriate path. We're going to let this run through ZBA first, and they have submitted, and I believe the expectation is they'll be on ZBA in July. So by the next time, obviously, we'll get to next meeting date shortly, but whenever we meet again, I think I'll have some more detail, some more information on that one in particular. At a minimum, I'll let you know whether the variances were granted or not. If they're not, then there's clearly nothing to come before Planning Commission. If they are, then we'll have to make a determination as to whether we're comfortable doing it administratively, which again, is allowed in the Site Plan Review Chapter, or whether we want to bring it to Planning Commission, which is also allowed in the Site Plan Review Chapter. That's the beauty of having some discretion. We can, we can take what we feel is the most appropriate process so that people are aware of what's happening. Not a lot of detail on that one yet either, but certainly more, more to come on that one. The next one I had on my list was, some of you may recall, we had the, we had the project that obtained site plan approval on Macomb Street. Mr. Stanko was the owner, if you remember Mr. Stanko. So this was the lower-level plumbing office showroom shop, upper-floor residential space. They did submit for their permits. Lori, I'm looking at you. They applied for their permits. They're currently under review for their permits. They did pass the zoning check before they moved into the permit stage. And by that, I mean, the plans were reviewed for conformance with what the Planning Commission had approved already. So we did that check. They were good. So now they're being reviewed for, for their actual construction permits. So is there, is there a timeline on that one?
County at this time. Our engineer did not approve it because upper Wayne County permits.
So more to come on that one, but it was such a big project, and it was something that came before you on a couple of occasions, that I thought that was, that that warranted a little bit of an update. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised. If anything new happens between now and your next meeting, we'll let you know. If you see dirt being moved out there, then hopefully they got their permits.
Brian, there was rumblings about the conversion of a business structure along Macomb to multifamily. It's a structure which, actually, right now is quite an eyesore for the community because the siding is off the front of the building and the corners. It looks terrible, and it's been that way for months. This is this wooden structure which is near the car wash in that area.
And what, what exactly is going on there? And when, they have to do something there. They can't just leave it that way.
As far, there's two things. So one was the conversations that we had with the, with the owner was that his, his interest and desire was to convert that into three multifamily, essentially into three residential units contained within one building. We did kind of a cursory review on that from a zoning standpoint. We gave him the guidance and the information he needed. It does require site plan review and approval at Planning Commission, and I've not heard back from him since we relayed that information to him. So that's the first half of the conversation. The second half is that if there are issues in terms of the conditions of the property and/or building, I would say we'll, we'll send zoning enforcement out to take a look at it and, and see what we can't do to, at a minimum, at least get the site cleaned up to a point where if they're going to do something, that they're ready to do so. And if they're not going to do anything, then let's make sure that the site at least is, is up to current standards and that there aren't any safety issues or, or anything too unsightly. I haven't, I didn't actually drive by that one.
That building is an eyesore.
Is it?
No doubt about it.
All right.
And it, it needs to be addressed either by, by getting a project approved to upgrade and fix it, or to simply take it for the, for the use that it's in now and get the, the front restored.
Yep.
One or the other.
We'll make a note of that. We'll have, like I said, we'll, Lori, if we can have Tony go out, take a look at it. Yep.
Also, also, you might find out, they're doing a great disservice to the senior citizen housing on the, on the rear of it because the, the rear is loaded with trash and debris, which is unsightly to the, the people in that nice senior housing complex.
Yeah.
I was pretty unhappy with that.
That's the kind of thing that shouldn't happen regardless of whether you're going to do a project or not. So yeah, the property's got to be maintained. We have ordinances that require such. So we'll certainly, like I said, we'll have, we'll have zoning go out, take a look at it and work with that owner, trying to get that cleaned up as soon as we can.
Okay. And do you want to speak briefly about the meeting that we had with the fire chief?
Yep. So that was next on my list. So a month or so ago, chairman, myself, and township manager had a meeting on-site with the fire chief. They are looking at the possibility of constructing a new storage building. It is amazing. Any of you who have, if you've had the opportunity to go through their building currently, they have a lot of equipment. And when I say a lot, I mean a lot. Like, I was amazed at how much stuff they have in there. And they are running out of space in their, essentially in their, their main building area. So we, we looked at the site, we walked the site, we identified a location. If you've driven into the site or even just passed it, you can almost see, and there's some carports that kind of line the back of the property. And I think ultimately, what, what we think they're going to come back with will be a design that eliminates those carports and puts a new building essentially in, almost in the same location, slightly further back to maintain necessary maneuvering width because some of the equipment that would be going in there is pretty large. So we need to make sure that it can actually get around back there and fit. But that was a very, very positive meeting to sit down with him, and it was just a good opportunity to, to go through and actually see what goes on in that building and, and like I said, how much stuff they actually have over there.
Yeah, they have fantastic assets to protect the community. It's, it is really impressive.
Yeah. Chief, if you're watching, I'm still looking for my boat ride, so.
I think he was planning on putting you in one of those floating suits.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that, though. I don't want to be a guinea pig. I just want to go for a boat ride.
Okay. I, I don't remember, I don't think that was, that was eventually going to be a Planning Commission item, although I don't remember for sure.
That, that's another item where the ordinance would allow for administrative review and approval of it, but we always have the discretion to kick that up to Planning Commission if we feel it's necessary or warranted. So that will be one. If and when that one makes some more progress, we'll, we'll keep you all apprised. And obviously, if it shows up on your agenda and it's before you, then you know what decision was made. If the decision is made that, that administrative approach is, is appropriate, then we'll at least keep you apprised, let you, make you aware of the project, maybe have chief come in here and present you with his building renderings or something so you can see what it'll look like.
I think that covers it, doesn't it, Brian? So did I miss any?
Yeah. The only other thing on my list is just another need, more time, got to get back to you. We have had some, remember, we went through the, the master plan review and update?
Oh, yes.
And we were looking for some feedback from some other boards, commissions, bodies, et cetera. So Lori and I need to, to jump back on that one and follow up to see if maybe we had some poor communication and they didn't understand what we were looking for. We've, we've not received anything. So I think I just need to look at how we presented the information and make sure that it, it got in their hands, that they understand what we were looking for, and try to, to figure out a way to, to reconnect that one and bring it back to you so that we get some useful information for you.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions on, anything Brian has informed us about on this, this topic? Okay. Well, then, Brian, as far as our next meeting date is concerned, a lot of uncertainty with, with, with things going on. I guess the preference would be that unless there's, unless there's a pressing application need, that, that we basically move to the fall, to a September or even October date, so long as we're not interfering with the normal pace of, of an application.
Why don't, if, if it's okay with, with everybody, why don't we tentatively go with September? And then worst-case scenario, if we have nothing, we could always bump it back a month if we wanted. But I'd rather, I guess I'd rather err on that side than have us pencil in October and then everybody have to rush because something did come in and we need to get you in sooner than that. If that idea makes sense.
Okay. So you're thinking like the third Monday?
Third Monday in September would be the 19th.
The 19th? How's that look, guys? 19th, okay? Now, let's, let's plan on that. And if, if nothing has matured to the point where we can process it, then we'll move it back to October. And I'd call that our next meeting date. October, maybe the third Monday in October?
Sure. I think, yeah, that, I mean, that works for me. And obviously, with the same understanding that if, if something does arise sooner than that, then we'll, we'll get in touch with everybody, we'll let you know what's going on. And if we, we had the need to meet sooner because of an actual, you know, development review application, not just more, you know, me, me looking at things and, and me talking, but more people with actual projects that, that need to be seen, reviewed, and heard, then we'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. What's the third Monday in October?
17th.
17th? Okay. So plan on September the 19th, fall back, October the 17th. And, you know, if we have to have a short meeting for a project somewhere along the line, we'll let you know and, and work it out. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. That completes the chair's report. If there are no other items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and support, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brian. I want to go through every site.